Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call the regular meetings of the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Mora?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Here.
And Mayor Rounds?
Here. At this time... Oh, go ahead.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Thank you, Fernando. At this time, I'd like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation. Please stand.
Love your neighbor as yourself. There's no commandment greater than these, Mark 12:30. In a time where the new year should bring joy, many have found chaos and destruction. As we look at the recent fires that swept through our neighbors in Altadena and Pacific Palisades, we see hope in the midst of what seems to be unimaginable. This is the time where humanity comes to the forefront, and we live out the verse, "Love thy neighbor." Let's find ways to be used by God to assist those who need help and give back. To whom much is given, much is required, Luke 12:48. I will share at this moment that Santa Fe Springs Christian School partnering with Florence Avenue Four Square Church and Ten Gram Furniture here in Santa Fe Springs is going to help move and relocate a school that was burned down in Altadena. That's going to happen on Thursday, so in two days. We're moving very quickly, and I wanted you guys to all know that love your neighbor, we've got to live it out. So let's all do our part. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us all the ability to help others, show us ways to step up and step into the challenge before us. We ask for your protection and guidance as we move through uncharted territories at times, knowing there's joy and hope. Our rewards are in heaven, and we're so grateful. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to call on Boy Scout Troop 5530 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Could I ask each one of you to take their microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us what school you go to, please?
My name is Joe Moreno, and I go to John Glenn High School.
My name's Landon Broson, and I go to Valley Christian High School.
My name is Alex Silver, and I go to Santa Fe High School.
My name is Randall Gaddis, and I go to Jersey Elementary.
My name is Matthew Torres, and I go to Jersey Elementary.
My name is Killian Lane, and I go to Temple Intermediate Middle School.
My name is Anthony Zalay, and I go to Pioneer High School.
My name is Max Medina, and I go to Lake Center Middle School.
My name is Jacob Buteras, and I go to Lake Center Middle School.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Did you guys like to get a picture? How about a picture? Okay, the camera's going to be right here in the middle. That's okay.
Can I have you guys get into two rows, probably people in the back if you want to get real fresh?
That means we have to find a spot this time.
Yeah. Thank you again, thank you. I'd like to introduce the following representative from Chamber of Commerce. We have Ross Guile from Digical Web Designs. Diego Delama, State Farm Insurance. He's on YouTube, Wave. And Kathy Fink from the CEO of Santa Fe Springs Chamber. Now, we have Presentations, Recognition of Holiday Basket Program donors. I'd like to call upon Community Services Manager Ed Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and members of the audience. Every year during the holiday season, the city of Santa Fe Springs offers two programs to the community, giving aid to families and seniors who face hardships. On November 22nd and December 21st, the Department of Community Services hosted the Thankful Neighbor and Neighborly Elf Basket Programs. Both of these programs provide seniors and families with assembled food boxes with many provisions for a nice delicious meal. And during the Neighborly Elf Basket Program, children and teens are gifted with toys or gift cards for them to enjoy. Each program turns the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center into a well-decorated facility, providing a welcoming environment to our clients to enjoy as they pick up their items. Here is a brief video recapping the event. I'd just like to please note that the video represents the tremendous work of volunteers and staff to help maintain the privacy and confidentiality of our clients. Mr. Mayor, City Council, year to year, the number of clients we serve fluctuates on the need, with some years more than others. However, these programs will not be made possible without the tremendous support of our donors. With their support, we were able to serve a total of 333 Santa Fe Springs seniors and families between both programs. We were able to raise 13,123 in monetary funding. We received thousands of canned goods, mostly in part by our Cub Scouts and our Boy Scouts here. We also received hundreds of toys through the amount of donations we received from the community, and we're truly grateful. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention the support and hard work of our Councilmember Mora, Flipping Hot Cakes, where he was able to provide a pancake breakfast with sausage for all who participated in the Neighborly Elf Basket Program. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, at this time, Council members, I'm asking your assistance in recognizing our donors that we have with us present this evening, and as I call their name forward, if you could please assist with presenting them a certificate. So I'd like to start off first, we have a representative from Associated Packing Incorporated. Next, we have Boy Scout Troop 5530.
Bless you.
We have Cub Scout Pack 553.
Good job, good job, you guys.
Good job, good job. You want to hold it? All right.
We have Councilmember John Mora. Representative from Ecowise Inc. Incorporated. We have Josefina Lara. We have Dolores Duran. We have Metro Little League. We have Santa Fe Springs Christian School. We have Santa Fe Springs High School. Western Corrugated Design. Santa Fe Springs Cities Employee Association. We have ZigLive Material Handling. I believe that does conclude everyone that we had checked in. I hope we didn't miss anyone. Council, thank you for your support for this event. These events, as you know, every year with your help, you also are a great help with the efforts in passing out the items as well. So thank you very much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Eddie, and congratulations, and thank you to everyone in the audience. Really appreciate it. Always a teacher. Good night. At this time, I'd like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong for the recognition of photo contest winners.
Good evening, Mayor and member of City Council. I'm here tonight to present the winner of the 2024 National Community Planning Month Photo Contest. This marked the city's seventh annual photo contest. This year, the theme encouraged participants to showcase their unique perspective of the Santa Fe Springs community. We received a total of 10 entries, and the planning commission have assists in selecting top three winner. As in previous year, the winning photo will be featured on various city platforms. Here's the third place winner and second place winner. Unfortunately, they are not able to attend today's meeting. However, we do have the winner for this year's photo contest. Yeah, so we have the winner and the second place here to attend the meeting. The winner is Alyssa Basara, who is a longtime resident of Santa Fe Springs and a former employee of the city parking wreck department. So at this time, I would like to invite Frederick and Alyssa to come up to receive the award and take photos with the city council.
Jimmy, where's the word at?
Thank you, thank you.
Great picture, thank you. You want to go get it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to take a picture. This isn't your plaque. He's going to go get it, okay?
First place first?
No, they can take it. You okay, Jacob? So this isn't your plaque?
No, that's her plaque.
Oh, this is your plaque?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, congratulations. So he's going to go get your plaque. We'll take a picture with her right now, okay? Want to take a picture? Yeah? No, no, he'll, he can come back, and then we'll take a picture together after he has his plaque. Congratulations, and thank you, thank you.
So that's the statue in front of the Gus Velasco Center.
Yes.
Abelitos.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we just want to ensure that we notified everyone. I got everybody here this evening with that checked in. So we have Peggy Radumas from the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club, who also donated for the event as well. So we want to recognize their efforts.
Never. The first time you've ever got your picture taken here?
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Bobadilla, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the City Council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to close public hearing and move on to the next item. Mr. Bobadilla, do we have any staff communications?
We have no staff communications tonight, Mayor.
Item number three, Agenda item number three, Appointment of Boards' Members to Citizens' Oversight Committee. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On January 14th, the City Council approved Resolution 9943, which established the Citizens' Oversight Committee, which is for a dedicated parcel tax ordinance, which was approved by the voters on November 5th, 2004. City, Santa Fe Springs, put out a call for applicants with the deadline of December or January 17th. I know we brought this up at the previous meeting, but the deadline for applications was not due, so we've collected now the applications before the deadline, and the applications you have before you for consideration for the two citizen spots are before the council.
Thank you. I'm going to take this in two parts. First of all, we have the Chamber of Commerce nominations. We're going to select three of them. We have three people that are interested, Wendy, Jeff, and Stefan. Is everybody okay with those three? Yeah, okay, okay. So at this time, I'd like to ask for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can you get a motion and a second for those three, those three for now?
Can I get a motion and a second for the first three?
I'll move.
There's a motion and a second. Do you want a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Aye.
And Mayor Rounds?
Aye. Thank you for that. Okay, for the residential, we're going to be selecting two ultimately, and I'm going to open it up for nominations if anybody has a nomination for one.
Give you two or one?
Just one at a time. Well, yeah, we'll call, Councilmember Mora, we'll start with you.
You want to do two, 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 and then after that, we could just see which ones have lost some of the nation?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So.
I'd nominate Sergio Valenzuela and Jay Sarno.
Okay. Councilmember Martin? Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye, that's fine. I have Sarno and Elena Lopez.
Okay.
I have the same, Sarno and Elena Boca Lopez.
Okay. Well, mine are going to be the same that's already there. So at this point, do you want me to state them?
Motion and a second on the one that you all agree on.
Okay, should I go?
No, just do the two, the two that you see the majority.
Okay, so everybody agreed on Jay, right? Okay.
Do the motion for the two, because it's already the majority there.
Okay.
It's all right.
So now we need to pick, well, no, 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 okay, my motion, I'm going to, mine would be Sergio and Jay also.
A second.
Okay. So do we have a motion, a motion, we have a second for Jay and Sergio?
That was your motion.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's why I seconded it.
Okay.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Aye.
Mayor Rounds?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So ordered, okay. I was trying to avoid that, but no, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, the appointments are done, no, 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 no. Next, Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority. Next, Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council Agenda, Consent Agenda. Do we have, we have a total of fourteen consent items, items four through thirteen. Do I have a motion and a second for, moved?
A second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Appointments to Boards, Committees and Commissions, Councilmember Mora?
Got one appointment, Eddie Barrios to Park and Recreation.
Okay. Councilmember Martin?
I thought I put Gloria on the senior last week.
Yes, was, is that change reflected on your roster, Councilmember Martin?
She's still, I don't have her on mine yet.
Okay, she is appointed on the roster, so I'll remove her name from the eligibility list.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
None tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
None tonight.
And I have none tonight. Next, Council Comments, AB twelve thirty-four, Council Conference Reporting and Comments. Councilmember Mora?
No conference to report on yet. It's only been a week, so it's been uneventful. Logan, yeah. It's been eventful, but, yeah, nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
No, no conference report, but I do want to make a comment. Over the weekend, we had a really bad homeless problem of encampments on Telegraph. Right, the Dollar Tree, and that's county, so we can't do much about it. And then they were moving on to our bus stops. Renee, I listed, no, I called Arlene, and it was day off. And within two hours, it was completely, completely clean. So, kudos to Arlene and our PSO officers who did that. I mean, within two hours, it was completely clean, and they have not come back to that area. So, please relay that message to the PSO officers. It was awesome, within two hours done.
Is there a number that you have for Arlene that we can get to, since we don't, I don't have it?
We'll send out the roster. But we'll have Priscilla. All the updated phones.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Good evening. I would also like to thank our Whittier Police Department. There was also a homeless encampment behind my company in Santa Fe Springs. They took care of it, and just in a matter of two days, they were gone. So, my company, Gold Coast Ingredients, would like to say thank you to our Whittier Police for doing a great job. And also, with all the fires and our firefighters, our first responders going out there to the fires. You know, we run away from that, but they run to it. I would just like to say thank you so much for going there and protecting our neighboring communities with all the efforts. They were included in that. It's just amazing. L.A. Cada is going to have a video at our next council meeting for all the donations that the city has brought. And I would like to thank everybody that was there last Saturday, helping. Dolores, I know that you were there, helping with folding up the clothes and putting them in tubs. I want to thank you so much. So, come by at the next council meeting, and you'll probably see yourself in the video. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora?
Today, I had the liberty of showing up to Transportation Meeting today over there at the city of Downey, actually was the host of the golf course. And I think some of the things that were crucial for us, that they were talking about, that we've been pushing for through the Gateway Cities Cog, is the synchronization of our lights. We have over twenty-three thousand lights here in our region. So, if you figure, and they actually calculated how much time you waste, you know, just being on the road because our lights are not synchronized. They, you know, so, they actually, I think they, they say we waste like twenty days, you know? And so, that's a long time being wasted just because of our own lights. So, we're in the process of talking about that, working on that. You know, so, of course, it's, it's difficult when it is a process because we want to push things, you know, further. The other things that we were talking about was when it comes to the transportation station, Norwalk Santa Fe Springs. I know that Metro and, you know, other entities are pushing for it to go to Fullerton. And of course, here, what's best for us, that it does go to Norwalk Santa Fe Springs. So, not only our residents, but also our community can utilize it a lot easier. Also, one of the biggest reasons why, you know, pushing for the synchronization of lights, people don't realize, with our trucking and with our transportation, it's easier for people to get in, get out. The quicker people come in, come through our city and get out of our city, means more revenue for us, especially since we are a business community. It just makes it a lot easier to, you know, because I know some people are usually on... Florence is one of our biggest hiccups in Telegraph, that they're just usually constantly waiting there. The other thing that we have is through the Homeless Committee. We just had a meeting today and came over here from there, got changed real quick. And so, the monies that we put in through our region, we probably, we pushed in about a hundred million as a region. Then what we probably have is about maybe two million and some change when it comes to residents. And we probably have eleven to twelve thousand homelessness when it comes to our, to our region, when it comes to our gateway region. The L.A. city areas, number one, they have forty-five thousand. We're second at eleven to twelve thousand. But when you look at the money, we pump in a hundred million, and we only get six million in return. So, we have a meeting this Friday, so, and city council, those of you, I mean, city manager, everybody's welcome to either get on Zoom or state your case of how important it is for us to get the money that we deserve. So, we had a meeting with La Casa and our housing trust, and talking to them that when they make a decision, it has to be a decision for the region. And, and I know that we have our county supervisors who are deciding that. So, I'm glad that you guys are giving me that smirk, because you realize that's how I feel inside, too. It makes it real difficult because they're not in it for us, you know? We have to fight for what's, what's right for us, and it's, it's a constant fight against the county. It shouldn't be that way. There is certain individuals that do see our side, but I'm just hoping the day on Friday that we get to move further from that. So, other than that, Quarter Mania. Those of you, Little Lake City School District is doing a Quarter Mania, February twenty-first, Los Nietos Park. It starts at three-thirty, and three-thirty is tacos and margaritas. Some lady we know, you know, she's tacos and margaritas. And, and actually, we're also going to be starting our Time to Play at six P.M., adults only. And so, we're doing it at three-thirty, reason being is because since it is a Little Lake thing, and of course, we do it for our community, money goes back to about forty-five hundred to five thousand kids. They write grants to the Leaf Foundation. We sign off on these grants, and money goes back to the kids. We've given away, this past year, we gave away, I sat on the host committee for that, we gave away a little bit over fifty-three thousand dollars in grants. Isabel Cervantes was also on that, so I do want to thank you, you know, for that. So, we have that coming up. And also, Fire Department, I just want to thank Anheuser-Busch. They gave a donation of, of fluids, drinks for them, you know, to help, you know, their battle when they're at the fire. And not only that, they also gave them to the stations to disperse. Aviv, I'm working on your guys' drinks also, so I did talk to Angela. And so, pretty soon, they're going to drop them off at your guys' station, and you guys can disperse them from there. Quarter Mania, what else is left? I'm pretty sure the city, we're going to, like, if you want to do, the, the city will do a table, so then you, you know, you can just... Well, we already did, but you know what I mean? Not to put you guys on the spot, but the city is always, you know, a great participant. So, I'm just saying, so if you want to sit with them, then we can make the reservations. Isabel already sees it, so we'll... Yeah, with Leaf. Yeah, her, yeah, her number's on the, on the flyer. So, other than that, I know one of our biggest hiccups is always homeless. And we talk about this a number of times. And it, now, sharing you the price points when it comes to the money, that's just because we were only getting two million, and it almost seemed like our county supervisor thought that she maybe had a run for her money, so she gave us, they gave us a little more. But I think it was only supposed to be like three million that we're going to receive. So, it makes it very diff, and this is three million out of twenty-seven cities and eleven unincorporated areas. So, it's a big region that only gets roughly six million dollars. Am I correct, right, Renee, or?
Thousand percent correct, yes.
Yeah, so, other than that, I mean, this is why our police department, our fire department, there's certain regulations that doesn't allow them to do as much because they have a badge. And it's hard because that's the fight that we're trying to do. I don't know if you, I forgot the name of the law, but it, you know, it doesn't allow them to go up to a homeless person, even though, so they have to be, you know, so when you guys do call, and the things that they do, and they go out of their way, it's because all the council were on the same page, and our staff, and, you know, and whatever we need to do to address it, because once you allow one or two people as an encampment, the next thing you know, you have more that, more to come. And that's what we're trying to avoid. You know, I know people love helping homeless people, but, you know, we got to do our part to make sure that, you know, we get them the proper services that they deserve, mental health or drug and alcohol addiction. So, other than that, may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs. Thank you, everybody, for all your volunteerism. God bless. Thank you to all our staff, and thank you to the council for, for the mayor and the city council for being who you guys are. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. You know, we can't thank our first responders and everybody that's been involved with the devastation that has taken place in Southern California over the last two weeks. Just unbelievable. You know, my, our prayers go out to everyone that's been involved, and thank you, thank you, thank you. There's, there's no way we can thank everybody, and, you know, and, you know, we're very fortunate that all of our firefighters that were sent out there, our police officers, our PSOs, our public safety officers have all come back safe to us. And, and I want to thank our city manager, when, right in the heat of everything, he was able to rally the troops and send assistance to, to another city without being asked. And they were blown away by that, because by then, people out there working had already been working over twenty-four hours straight. So, they really gladly appreciated that. So, thank you for that, Renee. And, you know, just hopefully, the rains, it's not going to create more problems, but more than likely, it will, and it just, it's a snowball effect. One thing leads to another. So, just keep everyone in your prayers, and thank you all, all of you for what you do and for the city of Santa Fe Springs. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Samantha Hahn, granddaughter of Senator Bob Archuleta, and Frank Martine, the longtime resident of Santa Fe Springs. Meeting adjourned.